Yeah.
It's gone. All right. Good evening. It is seven o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. You'll have to excuse my voice tonight. I'm dealing with a little laryngitis. Hopefully it'll stick out for the meeting. Dr. Mitzik, has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
And roll call will show that all five board members are present. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin tonight with communications. Dr. Mitzik, do you have any communications?
I do. Internet safety strategies for parents and guardians was presented by a team member from the Wisconsin Department of Justice's Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The presentation provided strategies and details for what parents and guardians need to know to keep their kids safe online. Online resources were discussed with participants to help families start conversations with their children, learn about popular apps, set parental controls and app settings, and support individuals through the tip reporting process should it ever be needed. Those links were shared with families in the Principal's Weeklys on Friday and are also posted on the District School Safety and Student Wellness page. For the eighteenth consecutive year, the Greendale High School Marching Band was named state champions after their outstanding performance in the field of the field, their field show, The Circle, at the WSMA State Competition on October fifteenth. The students also earned caption awards for best visual presentation, best music, and best auxiliary, which is color guard. Community members can watch the 2023 award-winning show performed at the state, at state on the Greendale Band YouTube channel. Preparations are now underway for the band's appearance at the ninety-seventh Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Greendale Middle School and Greendale High School Sources of Strength Peer Ambassadors completed their annual team building and training recently. They launched a year-long campaign to create positive messaging and events to bring hope, help, and strength to our schools, improving student wellness and support, sense of belonging, and school climate. The Greendale Park and Recreation Ad hoc Committee work is nearing completion. The community is invited to an open house from six to six-thirty and the formal report presentation to the Greendale Board of Trustees and the Board of Education on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at six-thirty PM at the Village Safety Center on Graydon Avenue. All are welcome to attend this event as the team works to finalize the community's study on park and recreation programs and facilities in the Village of Greendale. The schedule for Tuesday, November twenty-eighth includes the six PM open house and the six-thirty PM joint meeting to review the draft plan. Raw survey data and the presentation shared with the committee at its September meeting is posted on the district's website. Greendale Park and Recreation received a donation of three hundred dollars from Bonnie Judd's for the Greendale Senior Social Club Holiday Party. The college PT, Park PTO donated a speaker for use in the school's physical, physical education classes. And Greendale High School Robotics Team received a donate, a trailer donated by the Greendale American Legion Post. Many thanks to all of those community members and organizations for their generosity and support of learning in Greendale schools. And that concludes my communications. And I will turn it over to Kaia if she has some updates from the student perspective.
Student Council had a meeting to decide our elections are like, our board, and then pretty soon we're going to be organizing our committees. And we're also starting our Fall Spirit Week. Today was Sweater Day and then different stuff going on throughout the week. I know Decca went on a field trip the past weekend or maybe the weekend before. Very seemed very exciting. They posted on their Instagram. I think it was a very educational opportunity for them. Student Equity Team, we meet tomorrow during flex, so we're utilizing our flex time now instead of after school or during class hours, which we have, are hoping to see. It's very helpful and we think already it's going to be very helpful. Band, I think that speaks for itself. Band. They won again. So that's always amazing. I think that's really good stuff going on at our school. I think that's it for now.
Thank you. And I will say that Board Member, Nick Lucia has excused tonight. I didn't mention that. I'm going to ask for Board Member Rogan if she would read, read the comments for citizens.
Sure. Welcome to all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public. Through School Board Bylaw one-six-seven-point-three, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. In accordance with the intent of the Open Meetings Law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. In order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak and to ensure that the official business of the district is addressed, board policy sets a time limit for citizen comments. We will be adhering to that board bylaw and its time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to only one time per meeting. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed thirty minutes. Are there any public comments?
Okay, seeing none, none. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item one-point-one. I hope you guys are going to bear with my voice. We have the regular meeting minutes and the closed meeting minutes from October second. Any questions before I'll be looking for a motion otherwise?
I move approval of the regular board meeting minutes of October second as well as the closed session meeting minutes of October second, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve items one-point-one and one-point-two, the regular meeting minutes and the closed session meeting minutes from October second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Motion carries. We're on to number two, our financial reports. So.
Don't we need to do one-point-two?
Oh, we, we actually took them.
Oh, is that all together? Oh, okay. Sorry, missed that.
Okay, item two is our financial reports. We have the monthly financials, revenue and expenditure reports, and then we're set to approve checks and disbursements. So any questions for Jonathan tonight? Jonathan, if you want to, do you have anything to share with us?
So included in your packet is financial information through the month of September of twenty-twenty-three. So this would be one quarter of the year through our financial year because our financial year begins in July. Revenues are at eight-point-six-five percent of budget as of the end of September, and that compares with eight-point-nine-nine percent in the prior year. Rev, on the expenditure side, twelve-point-eight-six percent of budgeted expenses, and that compares with fourteen-point-two-eight percent in the prior year. We've also updated information regarding spending for the S R federal stimulus funds. And so you'll see with the expiration of the S R two program, we've a hundred percent fully expended those S R two funds, and then we're at seventy-nine percent of spending on the allocation for S R three. So if you take all the dollars that have been allocated, we're now at about eighty-six percent of spend, and we've committed those remaining dollars on S R three between staffing and through HVAC contracted work for summer of twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Is, um, any questions for Mr. Mitchell? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve checks and disbursements.
I move to, I move to approve general disbursements in the amount of seven-hundred-thirty-eight thousand nine-hundred-fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents and payroll in the amount of two-million-three-hundred-nine-thousand-twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents for a total disbursement of three-million-foury-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents as outlined in Agenda Item two-point-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve checks and disbursements. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Motion carries. Our new business is first of all, four-point-one, the approval of the tax levy for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Dr. Mitzik?
Yes, I recommend that we take both four-point-one and four-point-two together. You'll make separate motions on these. State law requires that on or around the first, on the first Monday in the, I'm sorry, the fourth Monday in October, that you will approve a levy. The levy is the amount of money that you authorize the village to collect in taxes to support the local portion of the budget. And then the second part is that you will approve a budget for how funds will be allocated and spent over the course of the year. You have been working to build this budget and consider this since January of last year, as we've done a number of projections along the way. And the budget was put forth to the community for an advisory vote at the annual meeting. So tonight there are some updates since the annual meeting that Mr. Mitchell is going to go through, and then we'll have some discussion, and you will be asked to take action on both the tax levy and the budget. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan for a presentation.
Thanks. So I wanted to summarize some key points that were in the background information, but I'm happy to take questions on both of those as we go throughout the presentation here. So a couple of things. We want to talk about the budget and tax levy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and talk about where we're at in terms of trying to get to a balanced budget and then what options we have available in terms of sustaining that budget. And we're thinking about how we're aligning resources to make a difference for kids. That's our focus point as we're going through this work. So we're trying to move those towards our priority areas that we know are going to make a difference. We've seen this visual before, so as we're planning that budget, we're keeping the strategic plan, the vision of the district. And at this point in the year, we're at step four, where we're talking about the refinement of the budget. Final information from the state has come in for us to plug into our original budget and tax levy, and at this point, we're trying to settle on those final figures. We've created the budget in alignment with the board's priorities, including low class size, equitable access to learning materials and technology, maintaining our core academics, maintaining our facilities, as well as funding the strategic priorities of the community. And so the current proposed budget is budget revenues of thirty-five million three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and expenditures of thirty-six million nine-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. So this deficit is significantly larger than what we have talked about in prior meetings, including what we talked about at the annual meeting, when we were at a projected deficit of eight-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars. So I wanted to take a minute to talk about why we're here this evening and presenting a budget that shows a larger deficit than what was previously presented to the community. I inserted end-of-year fund balance percentage because board policy requires the board to create a budget that keeps a minimum of fifteen percent of fund balance based on prior year expenditures. And so the budget that's presented here would be at fifteen-point-two percent, which is very close to that target. So we can come back to that as we have the conversation. The biggest driver in the change in projections are costs on our self-funded health insurance plan. So a little bit of background, our health insurance plan runs a plan year that's different than our financial year. So our financial year runs July one to June thirtieth, but our health insurance plan runs September one to August thirty-first. So some of these dates are going to allocate based on whether we're talking about plan year for the health plan or financial year. So feel free to stop me if you've got any questions about that as we're having the conversation. So when we got to the end of our financial year for twenty-twenty-three, June thirtieth, we had to make projections of where we would be for the end of the health insurance plan when that ended at the end of August. So what would happen in those last sixty days? And at that point, we were projecting to be on budget, which would be about six-point-one-three million dollars, as we have on the top of the screen. And then as we worked through late into the month of July and through the month of August, we started seeing additional health insurance claims versus what we projected. And so the actual health insurance cost that we have as of the end of August is six-million-four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. So that difference, just in those two months, is an impact of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand seven-hundred dollars. And so that, those expenses came in after we finished the financial year, so show up in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And so the biggest question is what happened that there is a discrepancy in this estimate? So one is claims data lag. So if you are a participant on our plan and you're receiving health care, the claim doesn't always come immediately after you receive that service. Sometimes that claim legs. And so claims that were coming in in late spring and summer, many of those did not get processed until after our plan renewal in July. So there's a lag in claims. So that's one component. The other has to do with high-cost claims and the number of participants on the plan that reached that high-cost level. And so what we have in reviewing this data with our health benefit consultants is that we've had eleven members on the plan that have reached what we call stop loss, where we call that a high-cost claim, meaning they've hit seventy-five thousand dollars or more of care as an individual on the plan. And when the plan is created and projected, the projection is based on all, all plans that are managed. You would have seven-point-six members. So to get to eleven members that are reaching stop loss that need that level of health care, that's forty-five percent over the projection. So there's two things happening. There's a high number of participants that are needing significant amount of health care, and there's also a lag happening where this data was not visible to us on the self-insured plan until late July and then into August. So if we take a look at what that impact is, so when the district sets the health insurance plan, we put in place stop loss insurance to protect how much the, the risk the district has, even though we are self-insured. And that level is seventy-five thousand dollars per participant. So we buy a partial insurance policy that covers everything above seventy-five thousand dollars. And if we take those eleven high-cost claimants, thus far, what is come in for claims that go through that last plan year is over two-point-one million and close to two-point-two million dollars. And the district share of that under the health plan is eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which is that seventy-five thousand dollar level. Everything from zero to seventy-five thousand is covered by the district. And then everything above that is covered through stop loss reimbursement. And so that's well over one-point-three million dollars. And that's as of October fifth. So it's possible there's additional claim data for services that happened before August thirty-first that still haven't been seen from the prior year. But if there are individuals that already qualified as stop loss, that means that those dollars will be picked up through the stop loss carrier insurance. So higher costs will also impact the plan going forward. So we've been talking about the prior year plan that went through August thirty-first. Now, the question with this most recent claims data is what is the potential impact for the twenty-three, twenty-four plan year, which would go September one of twenty-three until August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four? And that plan was projected at six-million-three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, and it was a six percent premium increase over the prior year. That updated plan expense projection with that newest data is six-million-eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and so that's a four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar increase on the go-forward basis for claims that would run from September one of twenty-three to August of twenty-four. So again, the, the matching of financial year to plan year, a portion of this will belong financially to the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, and that will end in June. So that portion of four-hundred-and-thirty thousand through June, if you just take that proportionally, would be three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. So if you add those two estimates together, the additional costs for July and August of twenty-three, and then the new projection of plan costs for September of twenty-three to June of twenty-four, would be an estimated impact of six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars to the health insurance plan. So I'll stop there for a second to ask for questions the board may have about that or how we're coming up with those estimates.
Questions?
I, I have one question. So, so if I'm understanding correctly, the, it was the claims that, you know, people were, were making. There were more claims than we expected and the delay in the processing of those claims that, you know, that upset our projections. And that's really the risk with health insurance, right? You just never know how sick people are going to get and what claims they're going to make. Would that have been any different if we weren't self-insured?
Yeah. So that's a great question because I think I've had a separate question of like, should the district continue to be self-insured? And so, you know, we talk with our benefit consultants about this, and we look at comparative data. And so I mentioned when we renewed the health insurance plan this last year, we renewed at a six percent increase. And before this new information, we knew that six percent increase was coming with very high utilization of the plan. Like that, that was through careful management. We got it down to six percent. And so had the conversation regionally, the, what I know from data that's been shared regionally of health insurance increases on fully funded plans, the average is thirteen percent from data that's been shared with me. And some districts have had thirty percent or more increases on their plan. And talking with our benefit consultants, they're pretty sure that we would have been on the thirty percent or more end of that spectrum in terms of what our health insurance increase could have been because we've had high, high levels of utilization. And there's also fewer participants that are offering fully funded plans. So Humana is no longer offering, and some districts are having to move their fully funded plan to fewer providers, so there's less negotiation available. And so I think, you know, I, I don't have a crystal ball to guarantee the board on what would have happened, but what we do know is that the fully funded market has been very challenging for districts as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, I think one of the things that we said about moving to the, the self-insured plan is that we can analyze data. And I guess I'd just ask administration, as we analyze the data, we've, we've really invested in some preventative measures, some safety measures, some health measurement. Is there anything that we need to take a look at there and modify that? Would, would that have, you know, is there a different way of looking at some of the stuff there that maybe that would help with some of these high-cost claims? So, you know, going forward, as we analyze the data, you know, is there any, are there any modifications that we need to make in our safety or preventative programs that would?
Yeah, I think.
Moderate some of that cost?
I think that's a very good observation and question because as you have additional data, you can assess as the plan as a whole in terms of percentage of plan participants that are engaging in preventative screenings. So I'm not going to comment on anything, you know, specific of plan or, or cases on the plan, but I think your comment is right, and we do have those conversations. So we know we've built off of a foundation where our initial health risk screenings that we take, we've got over ninety percent participation from those staff that we asked to do that. And we know that we've created a continuum of direct contracts, so staff have easy access to low-cost resources if they need support with general screening. But your point is correct that as we're having conversations on the plan, that we can disaggregate the data to make recommendations on additional screenings that we can discuss from our benefit consultant on how to, how you best incentivize those. Thank you.
And I had another question. So I don't, I'm not sure if this is on, an option here, but when I was working at Northwestern Mutual, like for family, they actually tried to get, like, the employee there was more than welcome to join on the health plan along with their kids. more than welcome to join on the health plan along with their kids, but if their spouse had insurance that was available to them through like their employer, actually, I think they even gave them like a thousand dollar credit just to try and alleviate some of the pressure on like their, because they were self-funded as well. So their plan, I don't know if you've thought about that?
So there is an option for a small amount of cash in lieu for staff members that choose not are eligible for full-time benefit through the health insurance plan, but to incentivize some of that. But we're careful in talking with our benefit consultant about what that dollar level is, because the goal of running a self-funded insurance plan is your pool of individuals is large enough that you're distributing risk. So right now, our latest census, we have 843 participants. So that's our pool under the plan. And obviously, the larger that is, overall, you're going to have costs, but you're trying to keep it high enough that you're distributing risk in how you're setting premiums.
And what you're talking about is what the umbrella of plan design changes, and those are always worth considering when we're going into a budget planning year. So we can certainly consider potential plan design changes in collaboration and in the budget climate as we think about '24, '25.
Any other questions?
You have more.
So we talked about that estimated impact, and that's subject to change based on claims, additional stop loss and reimbursements that we may receive, and enrollment in the plan. So going forward, next steps, we'll plan to report on this monthly to the board with that estimated impact to the budget and update that on a monthly basis. What we continue to do is utilize direct contracting, continue to use intensive negotiation for our stop loss insurance, which we did do in our renewal this year, continue intensive negotiation of rebates that we can receive for pharmacy prescription drug usage, and continued education of the staff on the importance of healthcare consumerism. And for those areas within direct contracting, we've seen high levels of usage of staff, whether it's near-site care through freighter at fast care, whether it's teledoc, online physician, whether it's medical diagnostic imaging, and staff members that are using that for MRI, CT scans, x-rays, or ATI physical therapy, that we have multiple vendors where we have contracts in place to try and save, and staff members that have that ability to do that are not in emergency need and situations are utilizing that. So we'll continue to focus on those things, but keep the board updated of those conversations and what that will lead us to in proposing updates to the plan in the future year. So one other item that is impacting the budget, we've had two expenditures, and from a capital aspect, we got to the first day of school and received word that we needed to make repair and replacement of an exterior staircase to the upper gym at Greendale Middle School. And so that is impacting us from a curricular end for FIAD that utilizes that upstairs space, impacts middle school sports, park and recreation, as well as extracurricular activities. So we've worked quickly to find a solution to replace that unit and have a tentative date of the last week in November for install of a replacement staircase for that upper gym space. The total cost of making those repairs is budgeted at $70,000. And then the second is, as we got ready for our marching band season, we got word that the trailer that's used no longer passed inspection, and so that was after our budget year had begun. We worked really hard to find a low-cost solution to replace that semi-trailer, and we then found ways to maneuver the budget to try and reduce that cost. So the replacement was $37,500, and half of that we were able to absorb through other budget savings we could find in the budget. And the other half is additional expenses to the budget, so that we made sure that we were ready to go with that programming this fall. So that adds another $88,750 to the budget. And that gets us to our new deficit of $1,588,000. So that's the budget side. Then from the property tax levy side, we have our proposed property tax levy of $15,431,228. And so we had an increase of $64,378 from what was presented at the annual meeting to the operational budget, and additional $30,000 increase to the community service fund. So the total levy increase from the prior year and what was presented at the annual meeting would be $94,378. And as we mentioned in the background item, that would be 0.62% of an increase from prior So we also broke that information down to account for components of the school tax levy that would be outside the control of the school district. So there's two items that are listed here. There's private school vouchers, as well as the Village of Greendale TIF. So I can take those individually. The total tax levy amount, and that's a component of the school tax levy, the school board's required to tax this amount, and it's in addition to our revenue cap. So the school board is an intermediary, and taxing that is $734,177. And that represents a total FTE for the voucher program of 69 FTE students, which is an increase from 46 FTE in the prior year. And so that amount of levy has essentially doubled from last year to $734,177, and that represents 4% of what will show up on the tax levy in total. What will also get added into the school tax levy before it's calculated out for individual tax bills is the TIF amount, so the Tax Incremental Financing Districts that exist at the Southridge Campus. So the, the Village has been able to estimate how much of the TIF amount will go to the school district tax levy portion. And so the estimate at this point is $1,276,112, and that would be 8% of what is included. So the, the school board will set a tax levy that is the school levy with the voucher payments. And then when the Village receives that certified, the Village will add those TIF apportionments, and that will set the final taxes that show up on the tax bill itself. So with that, any questions the board has regarding school tax levy or budget? The board would be taking action on the budget that has been proposed and a total school tax levy of 14, sorry, $15,431,228. And that is the full revenue limit that is allowed for the school district.
I'm just wondering if you could, just since we're talking about budget, and people might be listening in, kind of define a levy versus the mill rate, because I think that gets confusing for people.
So school tax levy is going to be the total dollars that are being taxed to provide programming. So what's legally allowed and what is the board passing as a school tax levy? So there's one big dollar figure. And then when we're talking about a mill rate, we're looking at the total property valuation for the community, and then tax levying this amount based on that property valuation in thousands of dollars, right? So the tax levy that's been proposed here is a mill rate of $8.29. So that would mean for every $8.29 of property valuation on your taxes, for every $1,000, there would be $8.29 of school tax levy. So you would do the math and multiply by how many thousands you would have on that property valuation.
Thank you.
Yep. I have just two quick questions. I'm not sure if there's a comment in there. So I think in some of your information that you shared, we talked a little bit about the voucher program and the increase that we're seeing there. I, I guess, I would like to ask administration to assess the reasons for that as best we can. You know, I think we've seen a little bit of a trend of the number of families, or I shouldn't say the number of families, but the number of students, the number of FTEs enrolling outside of Greendale schools and into a voucher school. So are there things that we need to be aware of or think about? Is this, you know, what, what may be causing this? So I think, you know, is it our programming? Is it just a preference? Is it a parental choice? You know, what is it? And is there anything that we can control to, again, mitigate or moderate the number of families, the number of students that choose outside Greendale schools?
First of all, we do not know the names or addresses of the students who are receiving a voucher. It is a program that is managed by the state of Wisconsin, and the state tells the school district, this is your count. So when he uses the term FTE, that stands for full-time equivalency. So every FTE is one full-time student who is using a voucher to go to a private school. We have shared with the board and the community on a number of occasions the distribution of school-aged children in, living in Greendale that go to the public school, private schools, open enroll to other public districts, or are homeschooling. And we continue to have 91% of the market. We will update that graphic and determine if we've actually seen an increase in the number of students enrolling in private schools, or if we've just seen an increase in the number of students enrolling in private schools who now qualify for a voucher. So we will do that analysis and, again, look to increase our market share. And on the scorecard, one of the areas is to look at some potential charters that would fill that need in the market that is causing, excuse me, resident students to make other choices in the marketplace, so that we have an option within our public system that fills their need. So thank you for holding us accountable to really analyze why students are choosing us as Greendale schools and why students are making choices elsewhere. And we will continue to report on that from a market share perspective. So while we won't be able to say this is why students are applying for a voucher, we will be able to say this is the percentage of students choosing private schools and the analysis that we've done.
All right, thank you. And then the, the second common question, my understanding is that some of the local parochial schools within Greendale or within this very immediate area currently do not, are not part of the voucher program. So I think we should be aware of that and understand that, because if, if those schools choose in the near future to accept vouchers, what would the impact be on Greendale schools? We, we have students already going there, but those schools don't currently participate in the voucher program. We don't control whether or not they do, but what would be the impact if, within the next couple of years, they make a different choice?
Well, I mean, you, you have to qualify for a voucher program, and so...
Yeah, I'm just thinking...
It wouldn't necessarily be just, you know, just, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be just Greendale students that might choose a voucher program. It could be students from Milwaukee or, you know, anywhere around the metro area that if St. Alphonsus decided to be a voucher school, it would, it would be able to draw students from the metro area, not necessarily from Greendale only, you know?
Correct. So, so, but my, my point is, you know, St. Alphonsus, does, my understanding, and I don't, I expect, you know, I want you to correct me, but my understanding is that they do not expect, they do not participate in the voucher program. If they choose to do that, some percentage of our students that are currently there would then perhaps qualify. Don't know what that percentage is, but we could certainly say that this is our total population that currently enrolled there. If 10% are now qualified, if 50% are now qualified, if 75% are now qualified, this would be the impact.
And that'd be true for any private school. I mean, they could be going to private schools that already have vouchers that they don't qualify, and then they may qualify.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking less of the families that qualify or not. It's whether or not the school...
Are you worried about the amount of money we would have to pay as a district for any voucher students who live in our district?
We don't pay.
Yeah, I'm confused by your...
The taxpayers pay, and so he wants to make sure that we are managing...
Okay.
Managing the risk of further increases to...
Oh, I see, to the general tax rate.
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't following your question.
That's exactly what, what I was, you know, wanted to highlight is that.
So to proactively re-recruit students or make sure that we are aware that there could be potential impact to...
Yeah, I want us to have conversations so that if we would see another increase of however many, how many students do we increase this time? What would happen if we saw another 20 FTEs next year or the year after or something like that?
Good point. Other questions? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Barely. I can barely hear you. Okay, so we, we are set to, we'll do this separately, right? So I'm going to be looking for a motion to approve the tax levy for 2023, '24. I apologize for the whisper.
I move approval of the 2023, '24 levy in the amount of $15,431,228 as outlined in Agenda Item 4.1.
I'll second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the tax levy as outlined in 4.1. And any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. Item 4.2 is the approval of the 2023, '24 budget. Is there any discussion on that any further? If not, I'll be looking for a motion.
I just have one quick question, Jonathan. Is the, all of the levy information that you just presented, that's different than the slide presentation coming up next?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, just wanted to clarify that. I move approval of Action Item 4.1... I move approval of Action Item 4.2, the 23-24 budget, school, the school budget and tax levy update presentation.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item 4.2. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion carries. Onto new business, 5.1, the future budget planning presentation.
So, we have been working throughout the spring to make sure that state law allowed for inflationary increases to revenue. And while there was an increase in allowable revenue, it did not keep pace with inflation. And we, you just approved a budget that has a known deficit, and we will be using fund balance to meet it. You also saw that the fund balance will be very close to the minimum allowable by policy, and so we cannot continue into 24-25 school year with a deficit, a planned deficit. There is no capacity to do so, and we have known factors at the state level. So, we need to begin today. You approved a budget, and now we're going to begin working on the budget for next year, immediately today. And we need to have a plan for how we will achieve a balanced budget for 24-25, as it is one of the scorecard goals the board has set. So, we're going to walk through some of the considerations as we go forward, and it's important to note that we are looking, we administratively are looking to give the board options for decision on how we move forward with getting to a balanced budget for the 24-25 school year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan.
So in doing that budget planning, we'll utilize our budgetary principles, and our work in setting those for the 24-25 year will be framed through the discussion we have this evening. So, some of the knowns that we have going into this budget year is that there was a three hundred and twenty-five dollar per student revenue limit increase. We also know that the board approved a resolution in spring of '23, spent considerable time working with legislators, having conversations, speaking at joint finance committee hearings, advocating for an inflationary increase that would reflect the freeze in the '21 to ' '23 biennium, as well as the budget for '23-25. And so, the board advocated for an increase of eleven hundred and seven dollars, and the actual increase in spendable funding was three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so, that three twenty-five number is considerably smaller. We just had a conversation about voucher payments. The increase at K8 for vouchers was a spendable revenue increase of one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, and for grades nine through twelve, three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. So the total percentage increase, that three hundred and twenty-five is two point six seven percent, and that compares with seventeen percent, up to thirty-seven percent for those voucher payments. We've also had conversation and shared these slides with the community in our school Finance 101, our citizen finance team, of sharing the total revenue allocations, showing the state legislature's prior indexing method. So alongside revenue caps, the amount that would be adjusted each year for CPI inflation, and for the time period from 2008 through this current biennium, that inflationary indexing adjustment would be fifty-four hundred dollars per student, and the actual spendable per pupil adjustment is about two thousand dollars, two thousand sixty-six dollars. And that gap has continued to increase, even with the three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil adjustment, that gap continues to widen versus that prior indexing method. So another way to put that in perspective, we've got two thousand, six hundred and thirteen students that we serve. That revenue shortfall versus inflation is three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars per student over that time period. So if you were multiplying that, that would be annual revenues of eight million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. So we've worked hard to try and balance the budget with the spendable revenues that are available, and we've tried to turn over every stone and work through ways to cost save. So we've talked about our work with local, state, and federal contract savings, we've talked about our cooperative agreements, we had conversation about the risk with self-funding, but we've also seen the areas where we can save money through self-funding our health insurance versus being fully funded. We also are utilizing a number of different partners for shared services, in particular, the Village of Greendale, whether it's doing fiber cabling, asphalt projects, our school resource officers, the park and recreation study that we're doing, or the recently approved short-term borrowing, that the Village was able to help us save on costs and interest expense on that by working in partnership with us on a line of credit. So we try to be very careful with resources. We know going into the next budget cycle that we have required mandates to implement Act 20 and the reading requirements there for aligned curriculum. The district began that work in fall of 2022 and worked on new curriculum in alignment with those state standards. But there are portions of that act that are unfunded mandates in regards to required teacher training, partial reimbursement for required curriculum, and summer programming for required reading plans. So there will be additional costs that we will have to project into our budget to make sure that we are covering bases in everything that we're required to do for next school year. We've talked frequently about our usage of one-time ASR stimulus funding, and as I mentioned, we've utilized eighty-six percent of those funds to date, and the remaining funds that we have through the third round of ASR are committed through staffing, which are instructional support specialists, as well as investments in HVAC upgrades, which is the replacement of equipment here at the high school, scheduled in fall of 2024. And that will be the full expenditure of those funds. Those funds will not exist for planning for additional new costs for the 24-25 school year. And so here's that amount. There's five hundred and ten thousand that's budgeted in the current financial year. So when the administrative team met with the board in a work session on June 29th, the board provided direction for administration to research two options to address that funding shortfall. And so the focus of the conversation this evening is to talk about each of these two options, and then at the end of the conversation, get direction from the board of where administration should focus time in these two areas going forward. So the first option was looking at reducing programming. So one of the areas we looked at were non-instructional spaces, and so our maintenance and facilities area. So as you recall, we've talked about our work with the citizen facilities team and updating how we're prioritizing capital projects and ensuring that we're maintaining equipment. So we looked at some of those contracts and investments. So one of the things that we do is invest in a maintenance contract for all of the HVAC equipment that exists in the district, and that's maintained twice, at least twice annually, twice annually through that agreement. And that agreement goes through June of 2025, so we don't have flexibility for next fiscal year, but after that, could look at that, but that would mean limiting investment on maintaining that HVAC equipment. We have a custodial cleaning contract, so we've had the conversation about when that ends, which should be, again, two years out, so that goes through June of 2025. We signed a multi-year agreement to control some of the inflationary costs year to year, so we could look at restructuring how frequently we're cleaning those classrooms. We thoroughly clean, at least spot vacuum, vacuum, disinfect those spaces nightly, could look at reducing that, or could look at expansion of contracted custodial cleaning where it's viable. We have a large number of all of our nighttime cleaning positions have been converted to contracted cleaning positions as cost-saving measures. The majority of positions that exist that our district are daytime head custodial positions or maintenance positions, which become harder and more expensive to replace as contracted custodial, but those are options that the board will continue to have as you go forward. Fund 41, so there is one of our funds that is under the revenue limit, and for about fifteen years, the district has worked to set aside two hundred thousand dollars annually to address future capital projects. And so, in perspective, we have over sixty million dollars in buildings between our five campuses, and so, two hundred thousand dollars is less than half a percent of the total buildings' value that we have in the district. So we try to be extremely targeted to that, but the district would have the option to not levy that Fund 41 amount and capture those two hundred thousand dollars, but that would mean deferring projects. Then a couple areas where we contract, we contract on roofing maintenance, because we want to extend the life of roofs and make repairs proactively as needed, and then also have a contract for chemical treatment of our boilers, to make sure that they're at the right chemical pH levels, so that they don't deteriorate earlier than they should. So that's one area that would be non, non-classroom expenditures. And then, we looked at technology, so one of the larger expenses that we have within the technology department are instructional software expenses. We did have conversations as we refined the budget for this year and did make reductions to what we were budgeting for instructional software. So further reduction of that would have impact to instruction, but another area that we can consider. The other largest investment that we have within the technology department are for the one-to-one Chromebook program that goes grades two to twelve, and that annual lease payment is three hundred and ninety thousand. The district is currently in a lease through 2026-27, and that would be the earliest that we could exit a lease, but there would be a significant impact to instruction if we were no longer one-to-one as a district. The largest area of our budget, if we're looking at the instructional side, is our staffing budget. Seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget is going to be composed of staffing costs. So in order to achieve a large reduction of cost savings annually through the district, there would be significant impact to staffing. And so that can impact variety of programming, class size, as well as student support services of our district. But if we were looking at savings in the two million dollar range, that could be twenty to twenty-five positions in our school district. And then, we've talked a bit already about health insurance, and I think irregardless of how the board provides us direction this evening, the discussion of plan design and the renewal of our health insurance, we will have to look at and consider modifications to plan design. And so, as we've looked at that in prior budget cycles, there's cost savings of two hundred thousand dollars or more, depending on what those modifications would be. If it's premium, premium share, or total out-of-pocket expenses, deductibles, depending on what those are, there's different levels of cost savings that could be made, but in many of those cases, that could be cost shifts to the plan participants. So then, on option one, I just wanted to bring back a slide that we shared that same evening, we were talking about the preliminary budget, and just thinking about some of the commitments that have been made, or projects that are being deferred, so that the total of these items is five point four million dollars right now. So a number of these items at the top of the screen were items that were deferred in the current budget because of the significant deficit that we were facing. So it's important that we keep a reliable technology infrastructure in place, but we delayed replacement of fiber connections to our main closets and our server spaces, as well as a need to begin to upgrade some of the wiring connections in those spaces to get up to current standards. We also delayed capital projects for flooring replacement, exterior door replacement, and roofing at the middle school. We also have a couple spaces for parking lot replacement. And if you look at our campuses, you're going to find areas where there's potholes, and we've heard the spaces, the space between the two brackman fields, we've had community members give us feedback on that. And so, we're balancing how much we invest in items that don't impact classroom instruction, while trying to manage a tight budget. So, right now, we are deferring capital maintenance and technology items. We talked about the Chromebook lease, we also have a lease for wireless access point equipment, so the total of those is one point six million dollars. The district approved and took out a state trust fund loan for eight hundred and seventy-four thousand for the six-year curriculum purchase for CKLA, includes those materials for that whole six-year period of time, and locked in costs for that period of time, so that wasn't subject to inflation. And then, renovation for the K8 reset program to seek long-term savings on providing more intensive programming for students that have social-emotional needs in our school community. We have about eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that is, at this time, unfunded in our Fund 73 OPEB trust, and these are benefits that were earned by 2011, but the district continues to work on an annual basis to slowly, fully fund those future benefits that will be paid out. And the last, our debt service items that are under the revenue limit are energy efficiency projects, which we are in the last year of payments in 2024, and then the Wisconsin retirement refinance, we are in the last three years of payments for that, and there, between those two items, there's one point six million dollars. So these are different, there are a number of other items that are additional leverage that we have on our financials on an annual basis. And so as much as possible, we want to deleverage and take care of our deferred maintenance proactively. So these are items that we have to consider as we're doing long-term planning. So these are items that we have to consider as we're doing long-term planning.
So to recap, um, none of those are proposed changes. Um, it is a brainstorm of what would need to be considered in shifts in budget priorities and values aligned to the community interest in ensuring a high-quality education that is cultivating excellence in every student, that we would need to consider those um as ways to reduce programming in order to um reduce our budget costs. Uh, there is a second option, and I will let Jonathan go through that. I just wanted to be clear that we are not proposing any specific reductions. That is an option that we could get to a balanced budget, um, but it would not be without impact on instruction and programs for students.
So option two that the board asked us to continue to investigate is an operational referendum. Uh, would require a motion from the board to put that question on the ballot. And the board could do that in spring of 2024 to impact the twenty-four, twenty-five school year budget. So the district sought out what that potentially looks like. So this is just draft. This is draft of what a ballot text could look like. So on someone's voting ballot, um, what would look like? And for the discussion, um, and based on prior year financial projections that we've done, um, we uh put in this draft ballot, uh, a 2.5 million dollar per year operational referendum. And we had that as a non-recurring. So anytime you're going to set as a school board, an operational referendum, you have to choose between recurring or non-recurring. Recurring means once approved by the voters, it is added to the revenue limit permanently as an option that the board can tax levy each year. If it's approved as non-recurring, it means it's for a set number of years. The the motion sunsets, the approval sunsets. And after that time, the board has to go back to the community if there's a need to extend that. So this language proposes five years for an operational referendum, beginning in twenty-four, twenty-five, and going those five years through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year.
I'm I'm confused, though. Um, why would it be 2.5 million dollars every year for five years? Would the opposite of that then be we're making all of these proposed cuts every year for five years as well?
You would need to, they're not proposed cuts. They're shifts in priorities that would need to be considered to uh reduce our costs to the point that we could um present a balanced budget. Uh, once those program reductions are made, it changes projections for future years because those costs are recurring, ongoing costs. And so if removed in one year, then that expense does not roll forward.
So so that would actually be the choice, then? We would either take a, you know, tighten our belts pretty, you know.
I think this would be beyond tightening our belts, this would be um.
Well, I see that it would be an impact, and obviously, we'd have to uh publish a more detailed list than just, you know, in general, you know, twenty positions are going, it would have to be which exact positions, all of those things. But once that is done, then it wouldn't be happening every year. Whereas this operational referendum for 2.5 million dollars, we, the way it's worded currently in the draft, we would be asking for 2.5 million dollars for five years in a row.
Correct.
And let me just ask, those proposed reductions would happen, but then we, it wouldn't just be a temporary reduction. It's not as if those costs would come back in year two, those costs would be reduced. And then the expectation is that they would stay out of the budget going forward. Is that a way of thinking about it?
It would need to, um, if you do not have a substantial shift in revenue limit authority coming through the state law.
Right, so if the state for some reason increased, then you would be adding back um some of what was cut.
If there's anything to add back, yes.
I mean, every year, we we get a different, you know, we're always trying to guess what's the state going to give us. This year, they gave us less than we expected. But with the operational referendum, we're asking for 2.5 million dollars for five years in a row, regardless of what the state does.
No, to be clear, what you're asking for is permission to tax up to that. But you annually get to set a levy where you don't have to exercise all of that capacity. So they would approve that you could tax up to 2.5 million dollars above the revenue authority granted by the state. But every year, you would evaluate the budget. And if the state revenue limit increased to a point that you didn't need the full 2.5 million, you would not have to levy that full amount. This is permission to levy up to that amount, but you would not have to use all of that money if there's an adjustment to the state budget.
Well, I think that that's not clear in the draft, anyway. I mean, it says buy 2.5 million dollars per year for five years.
We're authorized to exceed it, but you take an annual vote on the levy and you do not have to go to the limit. And that's true even with the revenue limits set by the state of Wisconsin. You do not have to use all of your taxing authority. Let's uh talk about what the impact would be of a potential referendum question.
So one of the questions is what's the potential impact of adding that to the school tax levy? And that can be done without significant impact to that school tax levy because of strong man resident enrollment and the management of debt that we've done through our referendum debt fund. And so why is the referendum debt fund important? So Fund Thirty-Nine is referendum debt. And there's two previous voter-approved capital projects that are in that fund. So there's the 2007 high school remodel and then the 2018 referendum. And what is currently owed for each of those debt issues is listed here. And so um that is, those are the components of Fund Thirty-Nine debt. And when we add up all of our outstanding debt, it was at 35,465,000 in June thirtieth of 2023. So a total um debt amount of 35,465 is owed. That's the principal amount without interest. Um, then there has been additional dollars that have been set aside towards debt prepayment. And so going into this fiscal year, there was 2.5 million set aside. And in the tax levy that the board approved, there's additional 1.6 million that's available. So of what is owed in referendum debt, there's 4.1 available, 4.1 million available for debt prepayment. And so the board has worked um very hard at managing the overall school tax levy. And so the point of this slide is to highlight that in the nineteen-twenty year, and this chart goes all the way back to 2011, twelve, in the 2019-twenty year was the first year of the 2018 referendum tax levy. And that year, the district total school tax levy was just over 16 million dollars. And that matched the school, total school tax levy going back to 2011, twelve. And in the four years since then, that has been overall stable to declining each year. That that tax levy has not gotten back to that total, that 16 million dollar total from the 2019-twenty school year. And so there's a reflection that with the number of resident students and impact of additional state aid under the revenue limit, that the board has worked carefully to be able to manage that total tax levy level um up through the discussion this evening to set the tax levy for the current school year at 15.4 million, which is below that amount in 2019, twenty, as well as 2021 and 21, twenty-two. And then we shared a slide at the annual meeting talking about the buckets that make up that school tax levy. So our different funds. And beginning in the 21, 22 school year, there were additional aid dollars from the state that didn't increase the total spendable revenue. So in keeping stability within the tax levy, the board uh made decisions in 21, 22 and 22, 23 to invest dollars towards debt prepayment. And again, this evening with the tax levy that's been proposed, additional 1.6 million towards debt prepayment to keep stability in that overall tax levy. And so that amount that's in the red, that's for debt prepayment, is a decision and choice each year um for the board based on uh the actual spendable revenue limit and its impact on the tax levy, as well as the desire to be good stewards in prepaying debt when we can do so.
Can you leave that up for a second, Jonathan? So the green represents our minimum payment on that referendum debt. The red is extra principal payments that you have collected uh in tax levy. So the only thing that the board is obligated to pay is the green.
And what you're saying, Kim, is we have, we've, we, in 2021, in 21, 22, we had 1.4 million dollars in prepayment money that. And in 22, 23, we had 2.5 million dollars of prepayment money.
Correct.
And then uh this year, we had 1.6 million dollars in prepayments that we could use for our operational budget.
We cannot use it because it was levied as a facility referendum. But if the board chooses to ask the referendum question for operational, we can stop collecting that portion in the red for debt prepayment and start collecting it for operations. But we need permission from the voters to stop use it, to stop collecting money for debt prepayment and start collecting money for operations. That is, that's what the referendum would do, is get permission from the voters to switch how we do that. So we can't do that without a vote from the community.
Okay, and what would the prepayment um be for the next five years, though? Because the way the referendum question is worded or drafted right now, obviously, we can change it. But it's asking for 2.5 million for the next five years, which is, you know, 12.5 million total. Is there a a projection in prepayments that equals 12.5 million dollars?
So I, in two slides, I can get to tying that conversation in and um try to answer that question for you because that is a very important question.
And I want to point out that this has happened with the tax levy going down slightly for the past four years. Um, and this year going up 0.6% on the levy that is controlled by district spending.
So just in total dollars showing that total school tax levy again. And then um that 2019, 20 year is the year where that 2018 referendum debt levy first came on. And that total tax levy was at 16,5,000, 5,623 dollars. And so we are currently over $500,000 below that tax levy amount. So I think thi- this will tie in some of the conversation, and then I'll start to get to Mary's question. And then we can kind of do follow-up if this doesn't help cover that question. So the question is, what's the impact of an operational referendum? And so right now, based on prior financial projections that we've done, we're utilizing a number of 2,500,000 dollars. And what the district can do is discontinue investments in debt prepayment. And so if you did that, you added 2.5 million and voter authorized, and you subtracted 1,610,000, you would be left with a tax impact of 890,000 dollars. And I think that's kind of what, one of the questions Mary is getting to, is that's a difference and that's a big difference. So one of the impacts that the district can have in how the debt prepayment is utilized is that the debt prepayment will receive additional state aid the year after the prepayment is made. So on 4 million dollars in debt prepayment in Fund Thirty-Nine, the estimate is that we would receive about 20% state aid. So for every dollar, about 20 cents in additional state aid. That state aid doesn't mean your revenue limit is bigger, that you're allowed to spend more money. It means under the revenue limit, you're getting a larger percentage of it through state aid. And at 20%, that state aid impact would be 800,000 dollars. And that's a one-time impact. And then the district is currently investing those dollars that are set aside for debt prepayment between CDs and investment accounts. And we're receiving, depending on what the investment is, 5% or more in interest. And so there's interest that is accruing from the revenue side different from interest that you have on the debt. And so the district could offset next year from money that's been collected and interest earned. Um, as an example, 90,000 dollars, and that would offset. So three things, you'd have the discontinuation of debt prepayment. You'd have the receipt of additional state aid under the revenue limit. And then utilization of interest revenues that you received. And this is an estimate. And the monies that are available for debt refinancing could be used multiple ways. But this is intended for conversation with the board to understand that there's multiple mechanisms that would impact the overall tax levy. And so in this scenario, the operational referendum would not impact the overall tax levy, given those additional three assumptions.
Sure, but that's just estimated for the 24, 25 school year.
Sure.
Right, so that's what I'm concerned about. Is it possible to just do a referendum, operational referendum question uh just for one year? I.
So I think the best to do in that case is, following the final figures that we received from the state, we have now provided the updated budget, so the budget I prepared for this meeting to our financial advisors at Baird. And they're the ones that have had us look at the long-term financial projections in prior years. And what they're going to do is rebuild, update those models with the newest budget year and project out five years of time. Because that would, that would get to your question, Mary, of what does this mean? If you did this in a scenario, it's only going to impact one year. But then what would happen to the taxes in year two, three, four, and five?
I I think that's the million-dollar question is, once we have that information. Otherwise, we should only be asking for one year because that's all we can safely estimate.
I understand.
And I think one thing might, that would be.
And I think one thing might, that would be helpful, and I think we've seen it before, is what has the state allowed that increase? Because I think we've seen that it's generally within a range, you know? So it's, it's, you know, the 325 is within a range of what we've experienced. So, you know, past performance predicts future sometimes. So, you know, we can see what has that allowance been from the state? And, you know, is, has, have we ever seen the state providing, you know, a significant revenue limit?
In the spring, when the board passed a resolution to ask the state to increase the revenue limit authority consistent with inflationary costs for 2021, '21, '22, '23, and '23, '24? I back that up wrong. 21, '22, '22, '23, '23, '24, and '24, '25. The state set forward 325 when the resolution that was passed was 1,107. The state did not increase to that 1,107. And what this proposed resolution is, is not asking state legislators to make that decision, but asking local taxpayers to make that decision. And when the state increases revenue limits, that goes forward and continues forward unless they have a negative reduction, which has only happened once. And then there was also tools to reduce costs that were given to school boards to be able to manage that reduction. So what is being proposed here in terms of a potential resolution as an option is to ask the local voters for what you ask state legislators to authorize in the spring.
I don't know how you're going to be able to hear me. What, what mechanisms do we have to educate the voters on this? And what are some steps you plan to take?
Well, the first thing is, we need your direction. So the next step here is for the board to have a discussion tonight about which of these options they would like the administration to consider and prepare to bring back for consideration at a future meeting. If referendum considerations and a referendum resolution is a consideration, there are timelines by which the board would need to approve that resolution to move forward. And so tonight, we're not going to talk about what we would do either in Option 1 or Option 2. We are really looking for direction from the board as to what should be further pursued and brought back.
Sure. Well, I've already spoken. Obviously, I, I, and I would encourage my fellow board members to consider the fact that there are school districts that go to operational referendum yearly. They, they wait and see what the state is going to give them.
We know which districts those are.
Sure. There's Cross Plains is one, for sure. I can research further if you'd like, but it's not that uncommon to do an operational referendum on a yearly basis. I'm concerned about the wording of the draft, because it doesn't say up to 2.5 million. It says by 2.5 million, which is a total of 12.5 million. And while that would, you know, be wonderful if the taxpayers would be willing to, to agree to that, I think it's asking for a lot without a lot of evidence. And I also think that even though nobody likes to look at budget cuts, even if we go forward with a referendum question, it's going to be important to tell what will happen if the referendum, the operational referendum doesn't pass. So at some point, we're going to need from admin a more detailed list of what a 2.5 million cut would actually look like, in hopes that the taxpayers, you know, to give them the full picture of what they're actually voting on.
I guess, I mean, this 2.5 million for operational referendum, if it's up to that amount, I'm not, it sounds to me like it's flexible based on what you need year by year from the next year forward. So I'm not sure why you'd want to go out every year for a referendum. I mean, you're not, maybe the wording of the, maybe the wording needs to be changed to "up to." I don't, I mean, I don't know how the referendums are usually worded.
Well, it's...
So then maybe it would sound like it has more flexibility that you're, that we're not asking for 2.5 million for the next five years. Maybe, you know, if it said "up to" 2.5 million. So it gives the district leeway as to how much they would utilize.
I mean, slide 21. So the draft says, "Shall the Greendale School District, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by 2.5 million dollars per year for five years?"
That's what I'm saying. So if that's the wording that's the problem, maybe it needs to stay "up to" 2.5 million. But I don't know legally how these are drafted. And I, would you like to say something, Kim?
There's some politics involved in the way you word referendum questions, for sure.
Are we getting our head of ourselves? You know, that, because I think your question was...
This is sample language. We will certainly, if you are saying pursue a resolution question, we will certainly take your feedback back to the financial, the financial group and the legal advice on how wording needs to happen. If you read any of our past ones, referendum language is very complicated, and so it would be incumbent upon us to communicate with the voters what the layman's translation is of the language that would have to be on the ballot.
I'm not opposed to, you know, the "up to" language. I would just prefer to see the Baird data, which would be, I'm hoping, replicating Jason's slide 27, or Jason's, sorry, Jonathan's slide 27. So, I mean, if we can show very clear estimates that with our debt reduction payments, you know, by reducing our debt reduction payments, by the state aid coming back, you know, because of those, the debt reduction, if we can show that over five years, it's not going to have a major impact on the tax levy, then, you know, I don't see any problem with that. But we don't have that data in front of us.
And just for clarification, I'm looking at the Cross Plains referendum. That was for 25 million dollars. So, you know, 25 million versus 2.5 million. So it, there's, there's a difference there.
And we're in a biennium for budget, right? So we know what's coming for this year and following. We don't know what's going to happen after that. It's...
We know, yeah, we know what's built into law, though. So the 325 per pupil right now is built into law, and that could be subject to change in future budget. So what I did here is, the board would like to see a five-year projection that would follow that timeline and look at an amount that could be added in that would keep tax levy, that would minimize tax levy impact.
Yes, for sure. And I, I think it's also important to start working on what the exact impact would be if the operational referendum doesn't pass. I know that's painful, but it would be important information for the voters to have.
One of the strategic priorities is to attract and retain high-quality staff. Our high-quality staff, if there is a list of, of that...
Possible reductions?
Our best staff may choose not to stay. So even if we were to move forward and not need to make those reductions, our cost to replace staff who choose to leave because of the risk would be heavy for this community. And so when we say that those reductions would require us to really consider the priorities set by the community in the strategic planning process, and to reconsider the quality and the value add of the schools on the community, that would be where we're at. So if the direction of the board is to, to explore that in greater detail, we would certainly seek feedback. I believe, based on my conversations with the community, based on the strategic priorities that have been set over the last several years, that this community values the breadth of programming and the services delivered in our schools. And this community understands, based on survey data from five years ago, that high-quality schools attract homeowners to the community who are willing to pay higher prices for homes. So having a high-quality school system contributes to the value of homes in the community. And so if the board is having a conversation about which way we go, I would like to, if there is a consideration for an operational referendum, that we be able to focus on not specific people or programs, but general budget principles that would be used to make those decisions, should the community not value adding, not value a referendum that would allow us to retain those things. So we serve the board, and I will certainly follow the direction of the board. I would encourage the board to consider that this is not about specific people or programs, that this is about budgetary principles set on the strategic priorities of the community, rather than a list of names.
Well, it would never be a list of names, but it would be a list of positions, right, and programs. And I, I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't want to, I know that it's, it is an emotional topic and it's very painful, but I, the alternative would be going to the referendum question, hoping it passes, and then if it doesn't pass, coming up with that list anyway. Right?
If we have budgetary principles, that list will be easy to generate. And so Jonathan has done an outstanding job of using strategic priorities and budgetary principles to make decisions in our recommendations to the board. And so we would not name the programs, we would not name, but we would shift the budgetary principles. So one of our budgetary principles is class-size targets at the elementary and the middle school and the high school level. And so if that budgetary principle needs to change for higher class sizes, then that's what we would look at. Not this grade level would be, would have one less teacher, or this grade level would have one less teacher, but that we would be evaluating a budgetary principle in which we increase class-size targets. Then, if we would need to look at that, we would be able to make class-size projections and quickly get to that number. So what I'd like to hear from the board is, should we be considering a referendum question?
I am all in favor of, for sure, a one-year operational referendum question, because we have the estimates that we can cover it without increasing the tax levy. If, I don't know what our timeline is exactly, but if Jonathan can come back with the data from Baird showing that there'd be very little impact over the five years, and I'm fine with the way the question is currently drafted. I still think as a, as a, as a, like a campaign effort, you know, you're asking people to vote for something, you should be telling them what's going to happen if they don't, if this doesn't pass. So I, some sort of...
I think we kind of did. We mentioned class sizes, we mentioned teachers, we mentioned deferring contracts, we mentioned getting, you know, not one-to-one Chromebook usage. So I think the list is kind of already out there.
There's the starting point. I mean, I'm looking at slide 16, where you said, you know, option one, to reduce spending, we're talking about 20 to 25 positions. And that would result in about 2 million savings. So I think the making, the starting point is there, whether that, whether those 20 to 25 positions means elimination of a program or elimination, or larger class sizes. I think there's enough information there, and we certainly can flesh it out as to what that looks like. But I think that that's the starting point of what savings would be needed. And I guess, you know, starting there.
I mean, and I'm okay with the referendum, and I'm, I'm okay with five years. Just, I feel that we need the flexibility, and I, I have faith in the administration that the, people aren't going to have to pay more in taxes. There, it's just, it's a switch between prepayment of debt and using that for operational expenses. So if they don't need the full amount, I mean, the district isn't going to use the full amount. And we don't really know what the state's going to do in their next budget. So, and I'm not sure we want to have this conversation every year.
That's a good point.
Rob? I mean, if the goal is to cultivate excellence in every student, I feel like option one is detrimental to that goal. As a taxpayer, I think everybody wants to wrap their head around how much more money they're going to be paying in taxes when they see referendum. And kind of like what you just said, your taxes aren't going to go up. So I would think option two would be the best way to go.
I think we just have to really be able to educate the community and have it in very simple terms so that anyone can understand it.
Yes.
Because it's complicated.
Well, and that would fall on us to get the message out.
No, I, I think we would, we would work, we would work with administration to get that message out.
Right, but we would have to be the ones, right? Because technically, they can't.
Administration can't explain the facts.
Right.
They can't advocate.
Right, right.
For one side or another.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. I am in support of option two. I mean, I think the state, I'll use the word regulates, you know, the state regulates how schools can raise revenue. And the way I think about it is that they, there are regulations on how much can be raised locally, just as part of property taxes. There's a formula there for state aid. And then simplistically, it's, if you want to spend more than this calculation, this formula, you need to ask the community, the taxpayers, for that approval. I don't think that's a bad thing to ask for that approval and to get that. It's not an easy thing, but I'm okay with moving forward, on continuing to look and see what an operational, I know we're not taking a vote on anything tonight or making any decisions, but I think that's, that's how I would like to see the administration continue down that, that pathway.
Well, and what percentage of the districts have gone up for operational referendums?
Eighty-two.
What's the success rate?
I just looked it up, because Clerk Capito was questioning. So there were 82 school districts in Wisconsin that went to referendum last year, because school districts are not getting enough money from the state to operate. So, and it was Wisconsin Heights, not Cross Plains. Wisconsin Heights has done an operational referendum for several years in a row, because they don't want to be absorbed into Cross Plains. They'd like to stay their own school districts, so the community continues to vote for an operational referendum. Dr. Mitzi, can, can you touch base on the actual percentage, if you know it?
The Baird operational referendum percentages.
So we can bring back the historical, the large percentage of...
So we can bring back the historical, the large percentage of districts have gone out even in the last five years. And as we've had the conversation with Baird to prepare for this conversation, what they said is, it's difficult to get time to sit down with you, because we have a record number of districts that are talking about going out in spring of 2024 for operational referendum. So I'll certainly bring back the specific data, but the majority of districts have either recently gone or are planning in spring of '24 to try and make up for the gap in spendable revenue versus inflation. That's just a mathematical issue that districts are running into.
It's 20%. So there are 421 school districts in the state of Wisconsin, 83 last year went to referendum, so that's about 20%.
I think one of our local school districts had a referendum.
Greenfield went to operational referendum for $5 million per year.
And I think that's important to, you know, see what's happening in the community. I don't know where this Heights place is.
It's a suburb of Madison. I'm, the point I was trying to make was just that operational referendums are quite common after Act 10. And to just have, having one each year is an option and not unheard of.
Anybody else? I'm going to have to put my thoughts into writing, because this is getting very hard. But I, I do agree that we should be potentially looking at option two at this point, just because of the catastrophic challenges that that will have for this district if we reduce the programming the way you've outlined it.
So in terms of follow-up on the financial side, the Baird financial team began last week Friday in preparing for doing updated enrollment projections for the new year, and we've asked to move to the front, and they graciously, they're helping us out with that. So we plan to have those projections available prior to the next board meeting, so that we could present those at that time and share that information with the board.
Sounds good. Any other further discussion? Okay, so we'll look forward to that information. 5.2 is the early college credit program approvals for 2024. I'm so sorry.
It's disappearing little by little. Ms. Olson has prepared a report on the students who have applied for spring '24 early college credit program. The approvals are made by administration, and the board is informed, so I will let her answer any questions that you might have on the report.
And this is a yearly report that I give because the, Mr. Lotus and Mr. Mensch, the school counselor, we work with students to see who is interested in this, and then I give approval, and then I bring those approvals to you for information, and that is what is in board policy. Some things that to note is that every year, we've been increasing the amount of students who've had access to this. So this year, we have three more students who are taking advantage of the early college credit program and the Start College Now. This is one of the robust programs we offer for our students in Greendale schools, where they are able to attend MATC or, that's probably our most commonplace, or the, also WCTC to support in getting college credit or certifications, so that they can start their experience in employment while they're still in high school.
Early college credit program is required by law that we offer and promote opportunities for students. The reason that we would not approve students' ability to go to an institute of higher education or a college for these courses is because the Greendale High School itself offers comparable course onsite, and then we would not approve. But you can see, we have an increasing number of students going to programs that simply do not exist in our system.
So for the CNA, is that, do they, are they actually certified then?
Yes. Correct.
And so like, what is like, I guess, the success rate of that program? Like, what percentage of the students that actually enroll end up becoming certified?
Yeah, if you do, we do not pay if they do not pass. So it really behooves students to finish the program and receive the credential, because it is then their cost if they do not pass. And it's been a really great opportunity for kids to leave high school with those credentials, depending on if they're going into a four-year college or a two-year college, because sometimes they can start as a sophomore or higher as well.
And somebody's taking mechanical engineering at Marquette, that's pretty impressive.
Correct, because they've gone through all of our Project Lead the Way classes, and they have exhausted the options, the robust options in Greendale, so we offer and support. The tricky thing is, is sometimes kids can't fit it into their schedule, because it has to be at a specific time. If it's at 12:52 at Marquette, that's kind of tricky to get to in the middle of the day.
Sure. And what is NCTD? For advanced calculus?
That is, I knew you were going to ask that. I knew. No, I knew, and I like looked it up, because I was like, I know she's going to-
North Central Technical College, maybe, or something?
It is a technical college that is virtual, so that is why. And sometimes they get accepted into several programs, so we do auditing later.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that's, it's great, you know, between all of the advanced placement courses that are offered, and then these early college credit options, boy, Maya and Nick, you sure have a lot of opportunities that the people at this table have probably never had, so thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, thank you for this report, Maggie. I think it's nice to see the breadth of our programming at our secondary level. You know, it's interesting, we just had a conversation about the operational referendum, but, but, so, I mean, I think it's great to see. It's interesting, when we look at some of these classes, they're very niche, you know, funeral services or things like that, where you aren't going to have a broad number of students taking it, so it probably doesn't, it probably isn't efficient or practical for a school district to provide that class. But it's great that students at that, in high school at that age, have the opportunity to take it at another place, particularly at a college level.
And that's something that we've taken into consideration, is looking to see if there is a group of students who it would make sense for us to offer that in-house, so that kids don't have to leave and that we don't have to pay a university, that they can have that opportunity with our teachers in our schools as well.
Calculus III, wow. I barely made it through calculus I.
Maggie, I want to thank you for this report, too. I just want to ask Kaia and Nick, because you guys are here, do you have any experience with any of this, or have any thoughts from your peers that you've heard from about these courses?
I'm personally not enrolled in one, but I do have a few friends who have taken some courses, or right now, or even the past summer have taken them, because it could also, I know our CNA program ran this summer. There's EMT classes, there's welding, there's a bunch of things going on even now during the fall, and there's stuff that can go on during the spring, too. And so even though it is hard to fit into schedules, and oftentimes you have to either pick, do you want to take time out of the school day and then sacrifice your classes you have here, or time you have with your peers, or can you do it after school despite how long it may run, and it'd be a really long day for you. And so this is kind of the time where my peers and I have to figure out, like, what we really want for our future, what we really want for ourselves, and dedicate ourselves to those things and put the time into it. But again, it's an amazing opportunity, and the people who take advantage of this opportunity are aware of it, and so they definitely don't take it lightly that they're in these courses. And I don't know many, if any, incidences of students not passing these courses, courses with the colleges' set of expectations and standards, because I do think they all are at a certain point of their life where they realize this is an amazing opportunity and should take full advantage of it and do well in it as well, because it's also the job they want. And so they can't necessarily, like, slack off of anything, it's a serious thing.
Thank you.
And I would say similar to Kaia, I have a few friends that participate in these programs, I also don't personally, but from my understanding, they've made the process very streamlined, so it's very easy to access these programs with just a simple form or talking to your guidance counselor. And I really think it speaks volumes to our school district, the opportunities you can have, is that just in our house, you can learn how to cook, or all these niche classes that we already offer, but then you can go out and learn about funeral service, or real estate, or music business. And I think that we're really in a unique situation, where we have all these programs, but we also have all these neighboring institutions where we can learn all these things. So I'd say we're in a really great situation, thanks to the work of Ms. Olson and all those on the team.
Great. Thank you both. All right. Anything else on that, any? All right, so thank you for that report. We're going to go on to our legislative update.
Just a couple things. There was a bill that was recently drafted that would expand the ability of all teacher licensed candidates to demonstrate competency in reading instruction outside of passing this, I guess, test called the Foundations of Reading Test. It's currently only an alternate pathway available to special education licenses, so they want to expand that. And then, I'm just going to kind of read this from the WSB site. There's a bill that passed the Senate, I think that's going to the Assembly, and it's kind of talks about what we're talking about tonight with referendums. It says, "Under current law, the pupil revenue ceiling is $11,000 for the '23-'24 school year and each school year thereafter. Current law also provides that during the three school years following a school year in which an operating referendum fails in a school district, the district's revenue ceiling is the revenue ceiling that applied in the school year during which the referendum was held." This bill would eliminate the provision under which a school district's revenue ceiling is the revenue ceiling from a previous school year, because an operating referendum failed in that district. So it did pass the Senate, and now it is going to head to the State Assembly, but it's not fully passed. Do you have anything to add to that, Jonathan?
That was a provision of the state budget, and the state legislature heard from school districts of what the impact was of that, and they made the decision in committee to unanimously repeal that provision. So it was a pretty significant turnaround from the state legislature, and it was based on comments that they heard of how that was impacting programming at the school level. So it underscores the importance of telling your story.
Thank you, Tasha. Board, now we're on to the board committee updates. Any updates from any board committees?
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Village Board. I wrote a, just in summary, as the liaison to the Village Board, I wrote a thank you note. I was at the meeting on October 17th, when they approved a $1 million line of credit that's, you know, I'll just read the thank you note I wrote on behalf of us. "As the official Greendale School Board liaison to the Village Board, and on behalf of the Greendale School Board Superintendent Amitsik and Business Manager Mitchell, I would like to sincerely thank you for unanimously passing a $1 million promissory note to the Greendale School District. I'm especially grateful to President Zabrowski for his generous nature and Manager Hawes for noting that this is a win-win for both boards, because we all serve the same taxpayers. We're grateful for the collaborative relationship here in Greendale, and we look forward to our next joint meeting on November 28th, 2023, at the Safety Center."
I did have something to say about the Greendale Education Foundation, because there was the Step Up to Better Health Run Walk this weekend, and I read Rob's email, it was about $10,000 that they made off of it. So that'll be split among the schools as a, kind of a proportion to their participation.
Great, thank you. Any other board update?
We did have a policy committee meeting last week, two weeks ago, so will we bring back any provisions there?
Yeah, we reviewed some of the NEOLA recommended updates that had already been incorporated into, so there's no new approvals that need to be made. At the last board meeting, Mary stepped back from the policy committee, and I do appreciate her service on that committee for a period of time. And Kathy, I know that you needed to make a new appointment and gave people an opportunity, so I don't know if you've-
Yes, I'll say that in whisper form.
You want me to say it? I'm on.
Rob is our new policy committee member, and I just again want to thank Mary for her service on the board, on the policy committee. And I did join you guys at that last meeting, and thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
Yeah, for the parking rec, it's been mentioned twice now about the open house and joint board meeting on November 28th. That's it.
Awesome. And then I'll just mention, with the Policy and Resolution Committee that I'm on for WSB, we have about 10 resolutions that will be coming before the delegates. There has been a lot of conversation about the referendums that many districts are having to go to. So I just want you to know that our discussion here tonight is a discussion taking place pretty much across the state of Wisconsin. Any other updates? All right. We are at the end of the meeting. I thank everyone for bearing with my voice. Oh, before we hear additional comments or questions from visitors, come on up, Amy.
Everyone wants to go home, and they're like, oh, God, she's talking. Just wanted to comment on all the budget conversation tonight. I mean, really good stuff, but it's a lot, so kind of what all of you are saying is to help get the community and bring them along, I think is going to be really imperative, especially looking at like that slide 27. I just think of all the budget meetings I've been to, and if this was like your first one, you're kind of like, it's a lot. But a lot of good data. And then in tandem with that, I'm just wondering if we might consider, you know, when Dr. Amitsik pointed out the budgetary principles, I think that's a really good call-out. Are there gaps potentially that we could do in tandem with the referendum to maybe tweak some spend? You know, not even necessarily a cut, but just kind of look at those, and is there something that, you know, we're not looking at that might not align with, you know, what we set forward? So, just my two cents, thank you.
Oh, Amy Pavella, 8875 Garden Lane.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions tonight or comments? All right, we are at the end of our meeting. We will be back on November 6th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, and everyone stay healthy.
Hopefully you have a voice on November 6th.